A time and date to visit the client perhaps with a family member or caregiver present. They'll go out, they'll do their individual assessments of the client. One, like I mentioned, from the psychosocial perspective and one from the health perspective. And then, of course, ask the client, speak with the client, get their history background, get to know the client and the family member and see what their needs are and what they would want from our program and how they would benefit from our program.
Right, I understand that. And, you know, it's amazing to me how often you look at what you think is a gigantic problem and in walks a professional and says, "Oh, Grandma can't reach the upper shelves. Have you seen these little handy things that you can just squeeze and get a can off the shelf?" There must be a great sense of satisfaction to help people remain independent and vibrant and in the place they're most familiar with, their home.
There is, there is. And a lot of families are not aware of services that are offered to the client. Anywhere from safety devices to make sure that we prevent falls to transportation to go to see their medical appointments. And also, this relieves a lot of family stress because I know as a sibling, I had to take care of my dad back and forth all the time. But when this program came along, he has a caregiver and he has an emergency response service. So the whole family feels so much more confident and secure under this program and so does the client.
Well, I know how that feels. Five years ago with all of our independent elderly women, I didn't even know there was such a thing as in-home non-medical care. I thought, "Oh, you gotta go right to the nurse," you know? And then to hear about, and all caregivers who are watching this will understand, that there are actually programs to provide relief for the caregivers. And that is important because we all need to take a break. This stuff can be very challenging.
It is challenging. And it is known that when a caregiver does take some break and they do come back to provide better care for their loved one or just elder who needs their care, it's proven that they do provide better care. And it just relieves the caregiver from, maybe they want a movie night, they want to get away from all of this. And I've been a caregiver myself, so taking care of my grandfather, I knew it was very difficult to even leave him home alone. So it is good to know that there is such programs out there. And with the emergency response system which we monthly provide, if they fall, they're home alone, they could press the button, paramedics immediately will show up to assist them in getting up or assisting them in any way.
Well, that's the worst fear.
It is.
Really, as I've told the story before, being on the freeway, stuck in traffic and finding out that my mother-in-law had fallen. And I was still 30 minutes away. And what do you do? You know, and it can really drive you crazy. But I want to, you mentioned something about the psychosocial aspects of giving care. I think a lot of people are concerned that when a senior citizen decides to stay in their home, that they're choosing not to socialize with people. But that's not really true. They still want to be active and get out.
That is, that is correct. They love to be active. A lot of them, we refer to Adult Day healthcare programs, senior centers, and they love to be active in those ways. We provide transportation for them to get out.
Very important in Los Angeles.
It is very important in Los Angeles. And a lot of them do want to be active. And they even, the monthly contacts and the visits that our care managers provide for the clients, they feel that they are appreciated, that there's somebody there to care for them.
That's one, well, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. And Aging in L.A. recently visited beneficiaries of Partner and Care's multi-purpose senior services program. Pamela Antoine has been looking after her mother, Ellen Pete, first from a distance and now they live together. And she talks with RN Care Manager Marjan Bijatani.
My mom was diagnosed with Alzheimer's in 2000 and I immediately became her caregiver at that time. It was a long-distance caregiver job because we lived in different cities.
Was it difficult to be a long-distance caregiver?
No, it was.
It's not easy, of course, no. How did you feel when you first heard the diagnosis?
Oh, it was a mixture of emotions. It was, I was overwhelmed. I knew a little about Alzheimer's and different dementias, but I really had to go to the research then, the books, to really understand what was happening to my mom. But Alzheimer's was the furthest from my thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, we never want to believe that's what's happening with our loved ones.
Of course. And were resources available or was it difficult to find resources for your mom?
It was a struggle. It was a struggle when she was diagnosed. Then, you know, where do I begin? What do I do in terms, how can I help add quality to her life, whatever is left of it and keep her kind of in the here and now? I reached out in the community to different resources, Alzheimer's Association, Department of Aging, to find resources to try and help because with her, there seemed to be a pretty fast decline. I noticed a very fast decline going on and I really wanted to be able to accommodate.
Of course. Tell me, how did you learn about Partners in Care, the MSSP program?
Partners in Care, wonderful program. I learned about through Department of Aging in my search of finding resources out there. My mom, at one point, started to lose weight and her doctor had prescribed a higher-calorie diet for her and insurer was prescribed, but living on a limited income, we couldn't afford it. And so I had to try and find a way to be able to provide this for her. Fortunately, Partners in Care was able to help us with that while we were waiting for ATAR to be approved, for her to be provided with the amount of insurer that she would need daily to help maintain her weight.
How has our program impacted your life and your mom's life?
Well, it has really impacted our life greatly. As I mentioned, the insurer was provided by Partners in Care until ATAR was approved and it took quite some time. They helped me with other things in terms of incontinent supplies, things that our budget doesn't allow for me to be able to have, you know, extra to provide for my mom. So it's been really a great help to us.
Had we not been there, how would that have impacted your life? What would have happened?
I hate to think what would have happened. I would not have been able to be a full-time caregiver to my mom if it were not for Partners in Care. I would have, you know, financially, we're pretty stressed, even still. But there are things that I think my mom would have probably ended up in a convalescent home, mainly because she is beyond the point of being in a board and care home, residential living facility or assisted living. So I think I would have had to look in terms of a convalescent home and that would have really broke my heart. It's a joy to have her with me. It's a lot of work, but it's a joy to have her with me. It's very gratifying.
So we have provided you with respite care. How has that been helpful to you?
That has provided me time to be able to get some much-needed time to, I call it "me" time for myself. That has been provided thanks to Partners in Care.
Has our program helped you manage your mom and help you keep your mom at home?
Absolutely. It gives me that break to kind of be able to revive my energy so that I can continue on with her daily and provide the best care that I'm able to provide to her. And I think she knows that too.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure she feels it.
I think so.
That was wonderful testimony to the services you're providing people. I was, I was struck by her admission that things can get out of hand so quickly, that diagnosis and an illness can progress so quickly that you don't know what comes next. And by having professionals around you who are already experienced, they can kind of prepare you for those next steps. And that's got to be incredibly satisfying to be able to say to the family, "Now, look, we've got this covered now, but this is what's coming."
Definitely, I totally agree. Just to help them out with whatever needs they may have, just to keep their loved ones at home, in this case was their mom, to keep her, to keep her mother at home and just to see the smile on her face that we were there to help her out with the needs that she needs, she has to keep her at home. And overall, I think it's been a great experience for her to be part of our program. And it's, it's just, we get so satisfied to see such wonderful outcomes when we are able to be there to help them out and to keep them at home in the such as this case.
Right. Well, you know, Anwar, it happens in families that somebody ends up being the person that provides the in-home care. Are you able to give counseling to other family members to help them understand what the primary caregiver is going through and what their contribution maybe should be so that...
Sure, we provide counseling through a licensed clinician. We also provide various other types of resources. You know, it's important for all viewers to know that this is a state-funded program and it's available throughout the state of California. And it's also important to point out that we have a collaborative of vendors and agencies that help us do our job. So we, we have other organizations that help us manage this case. And by the way, all this is very, very confidential. Confidentiality is our number-one goal here.
Well, we need to talk more about this, but it's time to take a short break. And when we come back, we'll continue our discussion on how to assist vulnerable older adults to avoid having to leave their own homes. Please stay tuned. We'll be right back with more of Aging in L.A.
The biggest blessing in life is to realize you're a person of power.
So many of us wonder, "Why are we living?" Well, that's why we're living, to help others.
Community work brings families closer together.
When we help each other, we all get help.
Doing good for others, doing positive action always comes back around and enriches your life. It's the biggest gift you could ever give yourself.
Doing good is good for all of us. Please join us in volunteering.
Improve your health by helping others. Visit iparticipate.org.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn.
Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to break.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate a tailgater.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off.
Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, "Life is Better at Home." Our guests are from Partners in Care Foundation. Esther M. Sofelian is supervisor, care managers, and Anwar Zuhayed is vice president of direct services at the foundation. Thank you both again for joining us. This is, this is really a good discussion because the idea that you have identified best practices for keeping people in their home is so important because most people would prefer it. Can you tell me a little bit about how you can apply the best notions that you've uncovered to a real-life situation?
Definitely. It is known that aging at home is preferred more often, obviously, than being institutionized. And, you know, it could be the simplest thing, simplest modifications at the house, such as adding a handheld shower hose to assist them taking showers easily, or grab bar or carpet tape to secure the rugs down so they don't fall. The simplest things could help these clients and individuals, our elders, seniors, stay at home and be comfortable and safe at home. And that's the goal, to keep them as comfortable and as secure and to prevent any falls. That's, that's our motto, just to help them out.
I understand. Now, Anwar, you mentioned something while we were in the break about how fearful some seniors can be about having strangers in their home or signing a contract, oh, there's somebody's going to take my house. How do you help reassure a senior that these services are not going to end up taking them to bankruptcy court?
Exactly. These services are at no cost. They are theirs, their benefit that they've earned and are entitled to. It's a state program. We are a nonprofit agency and there is no contract to sign. You simply sign the care plan agreeing that this is a service you want us to provide. Each client has an individualized, personalized care plan. And based on the agreement with the family and the client and the care managers and, of course, the supervisor, we all come up with a care plan. And once the client signs, we're able to provide them this needed service.
Now, what about follow-up? I mean, elderly people's needs do change. Is that part of what you do by managing or supervising rather the case managers?
Well, all the care managers actually make monthly contacts to their clients. And every three months, they go out to visit the client. And every six months, we have the alternate discipline, which meant like if the primary care manager is a social worker, the nurse will go out to see the client and assess what they believe might have been changes and how to assist the client even further. And every year, we have a reassessment, is when we go out there and assess the entire atmosphere, safety, ambulatory equipment usage, medications, emergency response services, just assess the whole situation, the health conditions, diagnosis of the client. If they have changed severely, how we could assist to keep them further from being institutionalized.
Right. You know, I noticed in the, in the piece that we saw with Ms. Antoine, that she actually had a hoist to help move her mother around. Now, how would you even know that such a thing exists?
Well, that's why, that's why we're here for. You know, we work really, really close with their primary doctors and their physicians in order to come up and fulfill their care plan needs. Our nurses and our social workers are very well-trained to be able to identify any medical needs, any safety needs, or anything that they, they need basically to make sure that they're independent and living at home with dignity. And that includes working with their primary physician and getting the prescriptions needed to install these safety devices or hoisters in their house.
Well, a lot of people aren't aware that you actually do need a prescription to get things like a wheelchair or whatever. But that, the hoist, I was just thinking, the many times that I, you know, it's physical, you pick this person up to move them into the shower because you don't...
We do help with that. We do help with all the process, even to get a prescription from the doctor. Our care managers will contact the doctor and say, you know, we realize that so-and-so needs a hoiler lift or to assist them, or needs a cane, or whatever the needs might be. And our care managers do make contacts with the doctor's offices to get a prescription. And we do have vendors who we use, who we send the prescription out to. Immediately, they know the process and how a company works, will send out the needed items to the client.
Right. It's, I, I know, I have seen too often where the husband ends up trying to take care of his wife and he's not very good at it.
Right.
And needs a lot of counseling to come to understand, this is not a failing, this is, you are not failing your wife and your marital vows. This is a hard job for anyone.
It absolutely is. And we provide counseling and education on how to be a proper caregiver. And, you know, we work closely with the city of Los Angeles and their family caregiver outreach support groups and, and ask the expert events through our family care partnership program, also have Partners in Care, that would help all caregivers be educated and provide them the, the knowledge and support that they need.
Right, now, it's very important. If this has piqued your interest, we're going to again put the telephone numbers up for you to be able to call Partners in Care Foundation so you'll have a point of contact. This is, it's a challenge. And we read them off again for you. Area code 818-837-3775 or 213-738-8320. And the website is www.picf.org. Of course, you can call the Department of Aging and we'll get you this contact information. So Esther, do you think that the population of growing numbers of seniors is going to get used to calling on you and other providers? Do you think it's going to be part of their, of their new reality?
Oh, I think so, especially with the baby boomers retiring.
Yes.
They're used to, more of them are used to living at home and living, living independently, I should say, than living at home. And they are going to get used to being on their own more than the current generation. And they are going to rely on little programs like ours to assist them with whatever needs they may have.
Anwar, that's interesting. Are you, is there an educational outreach for the people who are potential clients? Is there, are you actively telling people, "Look, we exist and you're going to need us one day"?
At Partners in Care Foundation, we have various in-services that we do through the city of Los Angeles community to make sure that they're aware of the services that we provide, whether it be caregiver services, multi-purpose senior service programs, Adult Day programs.
I wish, you know, I wish we had more time, but that's all the time we have for today's edition of Aging in L.A. I want to give special thanks to our guests from Partners in Care Foundation, Esther M. Sofelian and Anwar Zuhayed. Thanks to both of you for joining us today. Thank you, bet. Now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. Did you know that more than 10 million older adults require assistance with daily living activities such as eating, dressing, and personal care? One-third of older adult Americans rely on Social Security as their main source of income. Simple home modifications such as adding grab bars and handrails could help many seniors avoid moving from their home. 96% of seniors wish to remain independent in their own homes instead of moving in with family members. Increased provision of in-home services to assist independence in the home is causing an increased vacancy rate of up to 30% at some assisted living and nursing home facilities. 15% of late mortgage payments in the older adult population are due to increased medical costs. And services to assist older adults to remain at home include home health care, homemaking services, nutrition programs, home safety and repair services, which are available through the Department of Aging. Call 1-800-510-2020 for details. That's 1-800-510-2020 for details. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and hear your ideas for future programs. So please give us a call. Number's right there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. We'll see you the next time.
I'm Renee, representing for Juventus from Van Nuys. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, April 6th, 2011. We're in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome those members of the public who are with us today, as well as our viewers on Channel 35. Channel 35 broadcasts these meetings live and rebroadcast them in the evening through the city's cable system. But if you're not close to a television, you can always use your computer as well to follow along. We have live-streaming webcasts of these council meetings. We archive all of our past council meetings and we have all of the agendas and supporting materials available for the public to read at lacity.org. If a computer and a television are not close at hand, you can always finally use your telephone to listen into our council meetings, and that's at 213-621-CITY. That's called Council Phone, and you can click through there and listen into any of our council meetings or committee meetings as well. And finally, one last way you can come is here in person or in Van Nuys in San Pedro, where we have remote town, city halls, and you can testify actually from those places if that's closer to where you live. Avoid a trip downtown and be able to follow along the city council. Want to thank those members of the council who are here on time. Council members Cardenas Perry, Reyes Smith, and Zion are here. That's six members, and we're waiting four more to constitute two-thirds of our 15-member body. We do not expect Mr. Parks until 11 o'clock, and Mr. Wezar is out today. So we are waiting the balance of council members. That is council members Alakon, Han, Corretz, Krikorian, Labange, thank you, Mr. Labange, Krikorian, Rosendahl, and Wesson. So we are now up to seven members. Again, council members Alakon, Wezar, sorry, Ms. Han is coming in. Alakon, Han, Corretz, Krikorian, and Rosendahl. And with that, I believe we are one person short, so as soon as we have one more member, we will begin. Thank you for your patience while we wait those council members, and we'll begin shortly.
May I address the chair?
Yes, Mr. Labange.
Two members are on the 10th floor.
I've told the Sergeant-at-Arms to keep the...
The sergeant is going.
To keep the chair up there.
But I know there's a motion somewhere drifting that would put committee rooms on the second floor, which I think would expedite future activities. Something to think about.
All right, we will look at that. I let the Sergeant-at-Arms know the chair should stay up there and the other member should come down. So hopefully, we'll get that second member. And thank you, Mr. Labange, for being here. And while we await council members Alakon, Han, Corretz, Krikorian, and Rosendahl, we will begin shortly. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. That's one person short. You're correct. Mr. Clerk, please correct my math. We are still one down, and we are only at eight, so we're still waiting. Alakon, Han, Krikorian...
Alacon, Han, Krikorian, and Rosendahl. We're still awaiting Council members Alacon and Krikorian, Parks, Rosendahl-- sorry, not Parks-- Rosendahl and Han. Alacon, Krikorian, Han, and Rosendahl. Please join us as soon as possible. Thank you. This is a final forum call for Council members Alacon, Han, Krikorian, and Rosendahl. Council members Alacon, Han, Krikorian, and Rosendahl, this is our last forum call. Please call the roll. Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Wezar, Corretz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Corretz moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. We could run through today's agenda, colleagues. Any items you wish to call special? If you can direct your attention to us as we go through the agenda. First items, please.
Items one and two are items for notice for public hearing. Item two is a PCN, and Council District 14 findings and recommendations are required.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas?
Very much. If we could put item two over on behalf of-- as a request, on behalf of Councilmember Wezar, item two, put it over to April 12.
April 12, okay. That'll be next Tuesday, without objection. We'll put that over. Thank you. Anybody wishing to-- we do have cards on number ones, so we'll call that special. Next items?
Thank you.
Mr. President, items three through six are items for which public hearings have been held. Item three is an ordinance. Would you like to hold it on the desk until 12 members are present?
Yes, we do expect Ms. Han and Mr. Krikorian anytime, so we'll hold that item on the desk.
There is a request, remember, to continue item four to April 12.
Is there an objection to continuing also till next Tuesday, item number four? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's hold five and six on the desk for our commission nominees. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items seven through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Any objection to consideration, colleagues? Seeing none. Mr. Corretz?
I'd like to call 14 and 27 special.
Okay. Mr. Corretz calls 14 and 27 special. Do we have cards on-- we'll call 29 for Mr. Zine. Do we have any cards on these?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on item eight, 13, 14, 15, 19, 24, 27-- excuse me, 25 as well, 28 and 29.
Okay. All right, let's close the public hearings on the other items. We're still awaiting 12th member with Ms. Han and Mr. Krikorian. Will please join us as soon as possible, so we can take up the ordinance. Let's hold those in the meantime.
The ordinances are items seven through 12, sorry.
Okay, let's hold those. And go ahead and please, on the balance, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items?
Items 30 through 32 are items noticed for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, will you open-- put those in the open calendar, because we can disclose them easily?
Mr. President, item 30, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $280,645.15 in the case entitled Carol Jo Gavin versus City of Los Angeles and Robert Reed.
Okay. Make sure you add it to that, Ms. Han. All right, let's hold 31-- actually, sorry, are these noticed for public hearing as well?
Sir, I have been informed that an opportunity for public comment was provided in the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay. Let's go ahead and-- I'd like to hold 31 on the desk just for now. Let's take up items 30 and 32, please.
Very good. Item 32, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $110,000 in the case entitled Antonio Lopez versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, any members wishing to be heard on that? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. 32, please. Item 32, please.
Item 32, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $110,000 in the case entitled Antonio Lopez versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, let's go ahead and open the roll.
So do 32 now.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved.
Mr. President, we do have 12 members at this time. If you'd like to go back and take the ordinances?
Yes, let's take up three and 10 through 12, please. And do we have the-- sorry, we did have cards on--
Mr. President, I do believe we have a card on number eight.
Okay, let's take up seven and nine as well, then. So that would be three, four-- sorry, three, seven, nine through 12. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
And nine through 12.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. I'd like to take out of order for Mr. Zine, item number 29 first. We do have cards from the public-- actually, I do not see a card. Do you have a card on that, Mr. Clerk, 29?
No, sir, I have no records of a card.
Recognize Mr. Zine, then.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jury amees the family of the LAPD detective involved in investigation regarding a hit-and-run fatality. February 27 at around 6:00 p.m., a 92-year-old Valley resident walking across the street in a marked crosswalk was struck and killed by a motorist who fled the scene. Jafar Amir Shahidi married 61 years to his wife, who's here. His son is here. I'm going to have the captain from Valley Traffic Division, I meant so, give you some information on this, requesting the council approve a $50,000 reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the individual that committed this hit-and-run which resulted in a death.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable council members. The department has run out of leads in this fatal hit-and-run traffic collision which occurred on February 27 at 6 o'clock in the evening in the community of Reseda. The department is asking for a reward that someone will do the right thing and call us with the information that will lead to the person responsible for this tragic incident that caused Mr. Amihi to lose his life. We believe that the $50,000 reward will go a long way in the direction of solving this terrible incident and bringing this individual to justice and closure for the family. I thank Councilman Zine for his support, and thank you, and the rest of the council members, for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council members. And I'm the son of Jafar, and this is my mom. My mom was married to my father for 61 years, and they had a wonderful family with a few other brothers that they live in the east coast. We would like to thank Councilman Zine and the rest of the crew of West Valley Traffic Division to help us out, to find the person who was responsible for our father's death. My dad is gone. Nothing could bring him back. But this incentive program will help our community for the better safe for our children and our families, that they could cross walks on our street and to be safe. With this person to be loose and still going back and forth on our streets, we feel that our streets would not be safe. So help us, please, to reward this incentive and bring this person to justice. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council today for the time that we can come here. This family is hurting, and I've run out of leads in the case, to be frank. And I hope that by approving this reward motion today, that somebody will come forward and give me the lead that I need to solve this case and bring some closure to this family.
And who to contact?
And you can contact LAPD at 1-877-LAPD247. You can also text a tip if you go on the city website, la-city.org. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. If we could hopefully have unanimous support on this to help this family in their grieving time to bring justice to this tragedy that occurred at the intersection of Reseda and Vickrey Boulevard in my district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our deepest condolences to you, and thank you for being here. And we will take a vote on that reward motion, by the way. Can you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
13 ayes.
That's approved, and we'll send that forthwith to the mayor. We're going to take eight out of order, too, as while we do have 12 members. Wayne Spinler, if you'd like to come forward on item number eight?
Take one minute. Okay, number eight. And we have a special lighting district. It's going to cost each of these homeowners in CD2. That's Paul Krikorian's district. He's not paying attention, so he doesn't care about his residents, because he just got re-elected. $307.11 annually, every year forever, on the property taxes for everybody in that district. How much more property taxes are you going to take people for a ride? You're going to make an ordinance that's going to shift the responsibility of sidewalks to homeowners. Now, on top of that, you're taking these areas of the city that have higher assessed values, and you're creating lighting districts and other types of special districts, and you're walking around the intention of Prop. 13, and you're adding these assessments onto these homeowners. These homeowners are cash-strapped right now. Gas is almost $4.5 a gallon. And now, you can't get enough money, and this is a re-ballot. So what a re-ballot means is that either they didn't want it, or it was defeated. So these homeowners apparently didn't want this. So if they didn't want it, and Krikorian is here today, why don't you defend your homeowners? And why don't you say no to this? You know why? He doesn't even want to look up, because the reason is, is because homeowners are nothing but little piggy banks for you people. This is absolutely outrageous. $307 for an assessment lighting district? It's outrageous. And I hope that there's other homeowners here in that area, but if not, it's been-- it should not be re-balloted. Turn it down, vote no on it. These people are taxed enough. Thank you.
We'll close our hearing on item eight. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. We'll now go to our commission appointments, and then we'll come back for public comment. That's items five and six. So if we can have Mr. Wesson and Mr. Hovagumian come forward. Come on to the center table, gentlemen. I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee for some opening comments. They had a hearing in committee already for these nominees, and Mr. Reyes will kick off the discussion.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, before us, we have two individuals who have stepped up to the plate, if you will, and are donating their time and working with us in a very difficult task in our planning commission. We have with us George Hovagumian, and if I didn't pronounce it right, please correct me.
You're right.
And Robert Lessin. If you'd just like to share with us, Mr. Hovagumian, your background, and then, Mr. Lessin, your background, and then go back to, Mr. Hovagumian, about what you want to see when you walk away from this experience, and hopefully in the context of what you're bringing to the table, your skill set, and how it would be applied in this role as Commissioner. Good morning, sir, and welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is George Hovagumian, and basically, I'm a mechanical engineer. I graduated in nineteen seventy-four in mechanical engineering, and I have done my graduate studies in aerospace engineering. I have my professional license in nineteen eighty-four in the state of California, and then I added the states of Nevada, Arizona, and Hawaii. My expertise is in design, management, planning, energy efficiency, green buildings, alternative energies, and a lot of things that the modern-day science is involved. I have evolved from small project to mega-planning cities, from commercial buildings to residential buildings to multi-residential buildings, multi-use buildings. So that's my expertise in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Lessin. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Difficult fall. I've been... I was raised in L.A. I'm a West Valley resident for fifty years. I work for the Painters District Council. My background is in employee benefits. I have spent a tremendous amount of time on various boards and trusts. I spend a tremendous amount of my efforts in dealing with committees and dealing with professionals, both attorney and consultants, to sort of bring consensus together and figure out the best thing that can be done for the participants of the plans. So that's my basic background.
Thank you, sir. And as we speak to what you would see as you walk away, can you address some of the issues that are in front of us, like housing, how to provide housing for our workforce, issues of transportation? Citywide planning commission has a very significant role, how we impact our built-out environment, the quality of life in our neighborhoods, and it's a very significant impact you essentially will be making on the city. As commissioners, when you recommend your point of view to the Plan and Land Use Management Committee, so can you just share a little bit of those thoughts with us? Thank you, please.
In a civilized society, we as people should take care of our own, and caring for our needy, caring of people who cannot afford housing, caring for people that need assistance from the city, it's a right thing to do. So I do believe that as a commissioner, we should look into all these issues in an open mind and be objective about it. The thing is, how to do it is extremely difficult, and it depends on each case-by-case basis. I don't believe I do have or anybody has a blanket program in order to implement it, but we should be an open-minded towards all these issues. We should look at it very carefully, and we should try to do our best to provide the people with whatever it can be done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lessin?
In a city this large, you know, we have a lot of things going on around us. We are a city of people. I think it's extremely important that we bring a balance to the table. Those people need a place to live. They need... In the end, they need a job. They need to be successful in our city. These are very difficult choices that have to be made. I think I bring to the table the ability to sit down and find the right choice for our city.
Thank you. And colleagues, in an era where we need to be a much more inviting city, we need to have a labor force that attracts businesses, we need to have housing for our labor force, increasing our capacity to build up our general fund, it does speak to the desirability of the city. And so the role and the skill sets you bring to the table will be critical in how we analyze not only these cases, but these opportunities as we move forward in our planning policies, our land use policies, our zoning policies, building and safety, cultural affairs. I mean, when we speak to how we impact the future of the city, you'll be playing a critical role, and colleagues, I would urge support for these two commissioners, given their skill sets and the goals for our great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you, and we appreciate your opportunity to... We appreciate your willingness to serve on this, as Mr. Reyes says, a very important citywide commission. There are a lot of issues facing our city when it comes to planning. However, we're cutting resources. Our... The budget impacts on the planning department is significant. The big issues in my council district are the community plan updates. Just in my district alone, we have six community plans, and they've been on hold, they've been delayed. San Pedro actually had a three-year deadline that they were trying to meet, but the last meeting that dealt with this was in two thousand and eight, November, so we're sort of coming up on that. We are assuming that's going to get delayed. My Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council has created a task force that actually meets once a month to brainstorm about community standards, because they have no idea when their community plan is going to get updated. It was last updated in nineteen ninety-seven. So we know populations are growing, are changing, but I really feel like, you know, these community plans have always been really at the core of how that community should evolve, wants to look like as they evolve. It really helps us, you know, kind of analyze everything else, every future development, you know, so they're really important. And I know your staff, the department's staff, will tell you they don't have the resources. Just hoping maybe you can take a look, maybe get with the neighborhood councils, you know, maybe they would be willing to help in the budget, in the financial aspect of staff that could help them update their community plans. It might be a financial partnership that you might could create with neighborhood councils throughout the city. I'd like to hear your... Both of your comments on the importance of community plans, and do you have any vision or hope that we really can work with our neighborhoods to develop these community plans going forward?
I understand your concerns, and one of the things that I think is happening here is we're all squeezed in our lives for time to do these kind of things. If I had been asked to do this five or ten years ago in my career, I couldn't have done it. It would have been an impossibility. I'm at a point in my career now where I have the time to go out and analyze these things and spend the hours that it takes to help move these things along. So I think that's another thing that I bring to the table.
I do believe looking into the community plans and working with the district council members and their planning staff, it's extremely important. So if, when I get appointed, I'm always available to sit down, discuss these plans, discuss with issues with any district, with any councilperson, and/or their planning and land use personnel. These plans should be updated as long... We update our life, we update the way we live, we update our offices, we update everywhere, and these plans should be updated the same way. But, you know, it has to be a coordinated effort between the commission and the district and their people, because I believe the main input should come from the grassroots, which is from the district itself.
Neighborhood councils.
Yes, it has to come from you, because otherwise, you know, it's a big city, it's a huge city, we are part-time people, and you know how much we can do if it doesn't feed us the most of the information. So as a principle, I agree with you, Councilmember, and as an open-door gesture, please contact us through you people and let us know whatever you need, and we will be more than glad to give you a hand on it.
Thank you. And I'm certainly going to vote today to approve these members of our commission. Can I just... And Ms. Perry, maybe you and I can just throw into the arena the idea of a little more gender balance on some of these commissions. We're replacing three men with three men. However, the balance is six men to only three women on this commission. It might have been an opportunity for the mayor to make that balance a little more even. So again, nothing against you, I'm certainly going to vote for you, but I'd just like to point this out, that seems to be a little imbalanced, and we like the way women make decisions and the way that they sometimes analyze problems in our city. So just a note to the mayor that maybe we could look for opportunities to create a more fifty-fifty in terms of gender. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, good morning, gentlemen. Are either of you familiar with the eleventh district, the coastal district, the one that has Brentwood, the Palisades, West LA, Mar Vista, Venice, Delray, Palms, Westchester, Playa Delray, Playa Vista, and LAX? Familiar with it?
Yes.
Not too closely, ma'am.
Not too close. How about you?
I know some about it, but...
Okay. One of our biggest issues is the gridlock that we have, thanks to Santa Monica, which did a very aggressive job-searching program, changed things around in the late eighties and the nineties, and over two-hundred thousand cars go through my district every day to go to work in Santa Monica. But there was no coordination or regional planning on transportation issues, housing issues, and development issues. Right now, Santa Monica is planning another major development, one of the potential expo stops. But also, in my district, there was something called Bundy Village that was an idea of a developer. It passed unanimously by the commission, but my community was outraged because there was no proper traffic studies done, there was no appreciation of the gridlock that we're in. So I ask you just from the top right now to be sensitive to the frustration that my district has about development projects that don't deal effectively with traffic issues. I just want to register that in your brain. The second is, I'm on an ambitious strategy to deal with homeless issues, which is something I just want you to be aware of, that I'm in the process of putting an ordinance together with the support of my community groups. I was in Westchester late last night with hundreds of people concerned about some of the strategies being employed, but it'll come on your radar screen later down the line. And if either of you have any insights into the homeless issues and how we should be dealing with it, I'd also appreciate it. But my question to the two of you is, what do you think you bring to this commission that would make us appreciate you being appointed to the commission? Each of you, your vision of what you see happening with your leadership on it? Either one? Go ahead, guys.
Very difficult position to be put in to answer that, but in the end, we have to start to improve how we do housing in our city. We work in one area, live in another. I think a lot needs to be looked at in how we do that. We have districts that have huge jobs and no housing, and we have districts that have housing and no jobs. So as we look at land use, I think that's an extremely important thing to be looking at.
Excellent, I appreciate that, sir.
Well, I've been living in Los Angeles for thirty-five years, so this city gave me a lot. So what I would like to do is dedicate my time to give back to the city. I do have an experience in engineering, I have experience in planning, and I have a lot of experience in transportation and other issues, too. So what I would like to do, you know, it's not just a blanket issue, that's what I keep on saying. There is no blanket issue. Every district has its own dilemmas, every councilman, that through this confirmation process, we talked to a lot of you, and I could not point out one issue that you guys share in common, you know, everybody has an issue in common. My point is to listen to you guys, to listen to the district, to listen to what it is every district wants. There is a district would like to have housing, there's another district would like to have a slow growth, some district would like to have a higher growth. So we have to be sensitive, we have to listen to you, we have to bring to the table our expertise in, not just in planning, not just in engineering, not... We have to bring to the table our common sense in order to understand, in order to try to make sense, because it's a very fine line to coordinate between the people, the government, the ordinances, development, and all these things. So that would be my stand, and that's how I...
I appreciate that very much, because listening to my constituents is a very important part of it. My constituents engage in the political process, and they vote, and they come to meetings. I got eight neighborhood councils. So when you have eleventh district issues, make sure you talk with me in my office so that we have community input.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Well, thank you, colleagues, for that engaging discussion. Just in terms of community plans, as you know, we were moving ten thousand, the goal for this year, but because the planning has lost forty percent of its staff, we're down to seven community plans for this coming year. Yesterday in Plum, in understanding the challenges we have as a city, we're going through urban... How do I put this? Development reform for our city with the building and safety, and we're engaging in the planning department. They're going through the whole analytical phase. They've interviewed many of the stakeholders, the Central City Association, the different neighborhood groups. They've been doing this for the past few months. They're doing quarterly reports to the Plum Committee. I invite your staff to look into what is being recommended at the conceptual stage. Many of us have certain approaches in what we think is best for our district and how we generate business, how we look at our own neighborhood scenarios, what we think should be healthy for our business corridors. L.A. is a great city, it's very diverse, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution, so I ask for your participation. I would invite you to these meetings, I'll give you a summary of what is being presented by the consultants, so that way, as we move down the road and start moving policy, when we start talking about code reform that match up with community plan directives, that we don't turn around and say, "Well, why are you doing that in my district? Who did you talk to? I'm the council member here, why wasn't I advised? I'm appealing to you." Ask questions, get a copy of the summaries, get the updates, so that way we can move this forward and see real results. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and thank you again to both of our nominees. Very much enjoyed speaking with both of you, and I think you're both going to bring a wealth of experience, convention center and labor issues, with Mr. Lessin and Mr. Hovagumian with his engineering background and green building expertise as well in particular. So thank you for signing up. It's a tough assignment, it's a lot of work, but we appreciate you. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote on these two nominees. Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, go to our general public comment, and our first speaker will be Charlie Smith. He'll be followed by Rudy Drayton. Like to come forward to the podium. And hold on two seconds, we'll just clear out the... Mr. Labonge, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl, if you guys wouldn't mind just coming over to the side a little bit for our public comment. Thank you. Mr. Smith, good morning.
Hello, council members, my name's Charles Smith. I'm with Plumbers Local Seventy-Eight, and I've been unemployed for over a year. I'm in support of the football stadium that you have been considering. If you approve this project, it means I can get back to work and hundreds of our members can get back to work. I can pay my bills, support my family, and hold my head up in society. This stadium and what it will generate for the city is tremendous. Our city needs this facility. It will help us and carry us into the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, we appreciate your comments this morning. Rudy Drayton is our next speaker. Good morning, sir.
Morning. Hello, council members, my name is Rudolph Drayton, and I'm also with Plumbers Local Unit Seventy-Eight. I've been unemployed for seventeen months. I'm in... And I am in support of the stadium that you've been considering. If you approve this project, it will mean that me and a lot of other people can go back to work, I can pay my bills and my mortgage, put food on my family's plates, and walk with dignity again, and it will help out our community and the con... with dignity again, and it will help out our community and economy, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. If we could take up item thirty-one, I think the questions have been answered on that item, before we go to the next speaker, if we can just walk through, I don't think we need to announce anything on it, just to accept the city attorney's recommendation on thirty-one. Okay? Let's go ahead and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
As approved. Latendra White is our next speaker, and public comment. And after that will be Rocky Pelacino, Pelacino, excuse me, Pelacino, I got that wrong last time.
And, Mr. President, just to clarify, on thirty-one, council voted to approve the city attorney's recommendation to reject the offer.
Correct. Please, ma'am, good morning.
I'm here to represent the people that, I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, my name is Ms. White.
Can you move the microphone just a little bit down, so we can hear you a little better? Like if you have a mic, there you go. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Well, I got a big mouth, I really don't need this microphone, I'm trying to be professional, which I am not. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, I'm in Ms. Perry's district. I came here from Atlanta because I transferred with a home, with my Section Eight voucher. I'm coming here today because I'm representing other people that are going through the same thing I am going through. April the eighth, I will be officially homeless without a Section Eight voucher. I came here with a voucher, I called Section Eight and talked to them about my voucher, they said that I could transfer. Once I got here, they wouldn't take the voucher, I'm going back and forth between transitional housing and the shelter. Why am I here today? Because in the shelter, they're telling me it's going to be two to three years before I can receive another voucher, which is not fair to me, because the city of Los Angeles has caused me to be homeless. What I'm asking is for someone to help me resolve this issue with the Section Eight voucher in the Los Angeles County Section Eight Office. They've sent me to the Homeless Housing Commission, I don't qualify for it, they've tried to help me in several different ways, but it hasn't worked. So, I'm here today asking for a fifteen-minute meeting with the mayor, so that we can work to try to get some of these people out of their shelters, and get their vouchers, and get a move forward, so that we can get more people off the streets. I would like for someone to speak to me afterwards, so that we can try to work this out, because I'm going to keep coming until we get it done. Please.
Thank you. We'll see if we can find somebody from the mayor's office for you to chat with, and Ms. Perry?
President, I can direct the young lady to my office again, she's already been working with my chief of staff, and I think has met with her, what, two times? One or two times. And so, you're free to continue to communicate with her, she is working on your issue, and I think you know her already.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Perry. Rocky Pelacino? After that is Lawrence Dickerson.
Good morning, President Garcetti, and sitting council members, first off, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to come in here to speak before you, I find that a very, a privilege. Secondly, I am an elected official with the Chief of Workers Local Union, I do represent some six thousand three hundred members, and I also represent some seven hundred apprentices who are sitting now currently in our apprenticeship programs. And yes, I do also stand here in support of Farmers Field. But also, I'd like to take that an extra step, if I may, and it's just not only about to bring the NFL back to the city of Los Angeles, but what I found and were listening to, when we had a social event last night, is the expansion and remodel of the Los Angeles Convention Center. Kind of seems like that guy sits back on the back burner, because we talk a lot about the stadium proposal here. And I must say is that in my eighteen years as an elected official, I've done a lot of travels through my job, and it seems like I've only been in the city of Los Angeles one time for a convention, because we just don't have the space here. And I must say also, as I learned last night, maybe possibly up to five major hotels that could come along with this proposal. I do truly feel, to each and every one of you, for me personally, this is a win-win situation, not only with us currently right now, with my local organization with well over thirty percent unemployment, through all the building trade crafts, well over forty percent unemployment. This will help greatly for all the blue collar workers throughout the city of Los Angeles, to bring jobs, and also, more important than that, jobs afterwards. We do stand here and rise in support of this, and we ask for your continued support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate your comments again. Lawrence Dickerson is our next speaker. After Mr. Dickerson will be Matt Dowd. Oh, sorry, yeah, Lawrence Dickerson, and then Matt Dowd. Good morning, sir.
First thing is, we're talking cuts, 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 I imagine our law enforcement, LAPD, might be affected by those cuts, but something you want to consider seriously, the level of technology that is now required to support our system of law enforcement has to be maintained, and you can't, you can't play with that one. Just, just a thought, right? The technology has to be there, if the car doesn't work, it's not a police car. What I'm here for is, again, the, I guess it's called a Watchstar Theater, and they're positioning it right next to the Metro Rail Blue Line, Hundred and Third Street Station, bop, 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 every seven minutes, in both directions, rush hour every twenty minutes. So, you're talking about knocking out a street that is a main thoroughfare in Watts to put in parking spaces, you're talking about knocking out a section of a park that people have played in and took their kids to roller skate ride, and learned to ride their bikes in, to put this movie theater in, but the only people who can tune out that bop, 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 are the ones who ride the train. So, make folks ride the train to come to the movie theater. Limited parking, we have a parking lot that very seldom if ever gets used, just west of the railroad tracks, we have the beautiful Bidge to Peace slash Rainbow Bridge Targeted Neighborhood Initiative that never came up, that has to be tiled in color, so that the airplanes can point out the watchtowers, and the glide path that they use now, as they fly over them very easily, there's the rainbow just east of them. But the bottom line, long and short of it is, people who ride the train can tune out the train whistle. If everybody drives over after you've knocked out Vermont, if it was a comparison with Los Angeles, that little strip right there, Grand D, right, make everybody rolls up and down that to drop their kids off to do this, to do that. So, one, don't close off the street, two, don't put any more parking, three, encourage people to utilize the Metro Rail in coming to the theater where they're going to be listening to the train running every seven minutes either way, in rush hour.
Thank you, sir. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, after that will be Zuma Dog.
First of all, problems already with LAPD, this new guy over here glaring at me, acting like an idiot, I don't know what the, his problem is, but that's why we're here, because we got problems with Venice Beach with the police still, trying to get to know and harass people, "Oh, I don't know who you are, I've never seen you here before," kind of thing. Now, we just got a preliminary injunction, the federal court, because they said it's offensive to report to the government before you do free speech. And that's what the police are getting wrong down there, they think you have to report in, and they have to know you, and check, you know, that you're okay with them. No, that's the fundamental problem, no checking in, no signing off, no interaction with LAPD, because they've got it, they get it wrong, they abuse, they abuse the power, blatantly. And I just, you know, see, you're getting in a massive conflict of interests here, you know, first of all, with LAPD and free speech, and then the civil department gets hit with all these lawsuits, because they don't, and I'm sure they don't approve of what the police are doing, because they end up having to pay on all these things, all this litigation. You know, it's the same with the medical marijuana, you're in a massive conflict of interest, because on one hand, you're helping the feds bust people, and on the other hand, you've got an ordinance, and you're trying to get money out of it, and regulate it. Federally prohibited drug, just stay out of it. You know, you've got to be on one side or the other. So tired of coming here, I'm getting old and weak, and my eyes are going, I can't even read this crap you've got written here anymore.
Our next speaker is Zuma Dog, after that will be Wayne Spindler.
Yes, happy anniversary, each and every one of you, shady what day. This marks a very important week in LA municipal history. Five years ago this week, April fourth, two thousand six, I came into these chambers for the very first time ever. Yes, I know, Deion O'Connell, it seems like it's been fifteen years, Eric I said he didn't even have any gray hair the first time I came in here, over Venice Beach issues. Now, what happened was, I ended up having to sue all y'all in federal court, and I whooped your ass so good, that the federal judge put an injunction, yeah, you losers, couldn't even beat us with no attorneys. Now, I hope Chief Beck is listening, because his moron squad is going to have to figure out a few things before they step to the icon legend, Zuma Dog. So, listen up, here's what happened yesterday, after five years of me fighting for my right to go to Venice Beach to perform and sing, I was done for the day, wrapped up, ready to leave, and a bunch of spineless, cowardly morons, gang members, I consider them an LAPD badges, that don't know jack squat about federal law, said, "Hey, is everything okay? How are you?" "Fine." "Gee, what songs were you singing?" I didn't know that I had to run my itinerary past LAPD. "Well, gee, what's your name? I haven't seen you around here before." "Yeah, too, gee, damn bad, I didn't know I had to run my tour itinerary past LAPD to say, 'Hi, I'm Zuma Dog, I'll be performing here all summer long.'" "Oh, well, are you going to be here?" "Ay, it went downhill from there." So, these stupid, uninformed, emotionally weak, psychologically damaged, cowardly, spineless losers, didn't know who they were fucking with, and so, yeah, that's protective speech, and sit down, Labonge, I got the floor. Thank you.
I'd like to warn you, Mr. Dog, for the use of language, and for also disrupting the meeting there, that's your last warning. Our next speaker is Wayne Spindler. And no barking. Arnold Sachs will follow.
Okay. Well, what do we got here? The rise of the Han. Now, as we last had our last election, she attempted to become the lieutenant governor. Fortunately, thank God, that didn't happen. But now, we have a problem, we have a congressional seat up for election, a special election with Jane Harmon, the twerp, the evil congresswoman that ran for reelection, and never intended to serve her term, never.
I can ask folks to sit down, sorry, behind you, I want to make sure you have the respect, if you please, sit down, thank you, Mr. Dog, go ahead.
Okay. She, Harmon ran for the seat without ever intending to serve the term. Now, who steps in the race? Janice, Chick, and Han, that's who steps in the race, because now there's another job opening. When are the people of CD fifteen going to learn? When are they going to learn? Well, now, what is going on with Redondo Beach, Huntington Beach, because she's been traveling up and down the coast, and she sees oil wells and oil platforms? Well, guess what she did? She tried to pass an oil tax, she wrote the law, and then she came to the council, and she, after she got her head torn off by her campaign donors, she wanted to vacate it, and she tried to vote to have it disbanded, but Paul Coretts wanted it, and she pressed the no button, she was the only no vote against the, her own law, and the voters disapproved. The voters had to save people from paying more money for oil. So, please, this woman is trying to invade your cities, Redondo Beach, Huntington Beach, other coastal cities, no, no to this Han, no.
Mr. Sachs is our next speaker, after that is Daniel Garcia.
Thank you, good morning, Arnold Sachs. This is a story from the downtown news, whether it's accurate or not, CRA from January twenty-fourth, CRA aims to protect nine hundred and thirty million dollars from the state. Proposed deal would save four hundred and fifty-six million for downtown projects. The reason I bring this up, there was a story in the LA Times yesterday, I believe Steve Lopez wrote a story, regarding LAUSD having to lay off five thousand teachers. And the governor of the state of California's argument regarding redevelopment agency funds is that that money could go for education needs. So, we have the city council here, on one hand, trying to protect the interests of the deep pockets by squirreling away four hundred and fifty-six million dollars for downtown projects. And how close to being shovel-ready are they? Well, that depends on how much you believe your city councilman. Conversely, the LAUSD has just sent out five thousand layoffs notices for teachers. Now, of this four hundred and fifty-six million dollars, if ten percent went to pay for education, that's over forty-five million dollars. But we need that money, so AEG, so the Grand Avenue Project, so the high-rise at Wilshire and Seven, Wilshire and Figaroa, can all generate jobs. So, what about the five thousand people being laid off? Do those jobs count, too? Good news is, we have city council members going on three terms, and we know that there's leadership there somewhere. All you have to do is look under the right rock.
Daniel Garcia is our next speaker, after that is Lisa Bauer.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, captain. My name is Daniel Garcia, I'm in City of Chicago. I serve for Haverly Weiser, and I work for, 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 and my representative is Mr. Smith. I want to talk about what I got here today. I got here in two thousand nine, what, case housing needs of people with disabilities. There's a brand-new report by the, we brought for this Congress, Congressional, Congressional Report. It's, it's, it's fine, how people with disabilities are living, in condition, in condition, in condition that are not affordable, inaccessible. Now, in LA, in LA, we have an issue on affordable housing. Personally, I have an issue with the LA Housing Department, commissed, housing department affordable committee, because it never meets, this committee never meets at all. You look, you look at the record, you look at the record, and they will show you, I'm more, 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 the housing committee never meets. I have, I have been going there, I have been entering them, I have been producing them, I have been, I have been there many times, and it never meets. So, it's, so please, I want to take them, take them.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
I'll make sure to get so serviette to both of them.
Haverly Weiser.
Mr. Weiser and Mr. Reyes, we'll get that, thank you. Lisa Bauer is our next speaker, after that is Phyllis Doherty.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lisa Bauer, this is the first time I'm speaking in here.
Welcome.
And it's because I care so much. Born and raised in Los Angeles, both my parents, born and raised in Los Angeles, and what happened at Dodger Stadium last week was unacceptable. And I thank you guys so much for putting up the money for the capturing of these people. But at the same time, we need to think about the city now, where we're at and where we're going. And with what happened, Mr. Reyes, I know this is in your district, and I don't know what we can do to stop it. A lot of people care, and people want more security in Dodger Stadium, I don't know what our contract is with Mr. McCourt, but whatever we can do to enforce any sort of security and safety for the people, people are scared to go to Dodger Stadium, and Ms. Perry, this also includes you, because of the LA Lakers. All of downtown, when they play, is a mess. These sorts of things can't go on anymore. And... And if you guys have any ideas for me, what I can do individually, do you need me to petition? What do you need me to do? As well as, I hope you, I'll take responsibility on your end. The people that I've spoken with, they want more security, they want more lighting in the parking lot, more LAPD, even in LED substation, LAPD directing traffic in and out of the stadium, cut down on guys selling T-shirts in the lot. Obviously, alcohol consumption is very important to consider. I want you guys to know that there's a vigil tonight for Brian, who's in the hospital, between six and seven tonight. If you go there, that would probably mean a lot. Any changes that we make now, and it has to happen now, if we wait too long, it won't mean anything. People will look at the city of Los Angeles as people who don't care and that's not who we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer, thank you for testimony. Mr. Reyes?
I wanted to ask, where is the vigil going to be conducted?
At the county hospital where he is.
And I want to thank you for coming and we are working with the Dodgers to improve the environment, but I appreciate your presence.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Phyllis Doherty. After that, we will go to Van Nuys and Candido Mars will follow Ms. Doherty. Good morning.
Good morning. I just heard yesterday about the fact that they're planning to close the, possibly the Northeast Valley Shelter, one of the most important shelters actually that we have in the city because it houses evidence animals and it serves as an emergency facility. It will affect the entire city if this closes. Today starts a new program for LA Animal Services. Our regular animal control officers will be taken off of their duties with humane investigations and protecting the animals, the people, the city, and will be doing licensing canvassing. Additionally, starting this weekend and going on for at least six weeks, we'll be paying overtime for our highest paid animal control officers to go door-to-door knocking when people are probably not home and trying to collect licenses. Licensing is down about $15,000 since the new general manager has arrived and probably one of the reasons is that immediately, here is the website. Everything was removed regarding spay neuter and licensing after Councilman Smith told her to put something on. If you can see this tiny little writing there, that says spay neuter information and licensing. It's now up to this size, dwarfed by the outside interests of rough pal, however that is. So, if we want to know why we're having to pay overtime and how can we afford to pay overtime when we can't keep our shelters open? Also, you're gonna be asked to reduce the amount of the penalty for not paying your dog license, down to $5 on a $20 dog license. No one will pay that. No government agency says we're going to reduce and you'll have no penalty if you don't pay. And we're gonna further de-incentivize by giving people 90 days after they get an animal to prove that they have their rabies certificate and license. We are going backwards on this and it's costing the city money. This needs, we need to stop accepting ceremonial accountability and start asking for dollars and cents in what's happening in this department.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. We'll go to Van Nuys. Next, Candido Mars will be our next speaker and then Henry Marin, also in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and council member. Members, yesterday was a great day for the city of Los Angeles. I was unable to attend City Hall or the DWP, but yesterday, watching the city council meeting from home and watching the neighborhood councils represent the people of this great city was outstanding. And I want to thank Dr. Weisman and Jay Handel and others who were there to represent the neighborhood councils. And as an American of Hispanic and Navajo Indian descent, I want to let people know that I was at that table with those gentlemen, even though they were Caucasian and middle age individuals, they represented me. And I want to thank Mr. John Walsh for always watching out for those who feel they have no voice in this city. So, thank you, Mr. Walsh, but I want you to know that Mr. Weisman has a heart like yours that's golden and I just appreciate the fact that you folks are always watching out for those who feel they have no voice. And I just hope that the city council will continue to work with the neighborhood council committee and the city council will do whatever it can to straighten out these financial problems. Also, Mr. Nichols, what he's doing over at DWP, is he the Moses that we've been waiting for? Is he the gentleman that's going to take us to the promised land? Not the promised land of milk and honey, but the land of low water and power rates and of accountability and transparency? Maybe, because of the fact that yesterday, they were able to hopefully cut $440 million, but we have a lot more to do. And the one area that they can go to are lawsuits. Why is it that the DWP continues to have some of the highest lawsuits filed against them? Because city attorneys are always representing those individuals who commit the crimes and who are the ones that are causing pain and grief to the workers who are trying to expose waste and fraud. Also, the supply chain. Mr. Nichols, if you'll take a look at that again, please, there's a lot of waste and fraud with $1.7 billion in waste there. I know that you can make the cuts to streamline the Department of Water Power. So, Mr. President, council members, thank you for working with neighborhood councils and we look forward to future challenges working together.
Thank you, Candido, appreciate your comments this morning. Henry Marin is our next speaker. After that is Donna Perman, also in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning. At the last meeting I appeared at, addressed your lack of understanding of prevailing wage and trust laws and vesting rules applicable to civilian employees working under prevailing wage laws in LA. However, ignorance of prevailing wage and trust laws is no excuse for city attorneys and accountants serving the people above and below them. Now, this E-RIP here, it's kind of hard to trust people that would say, "I freely voluntarily, completely, and permanently release the city, its governing bodies, and all officials, employees, agents, and any others acting for it collectively for all claims resulting from my participation in the E-RIP, including all federal, state, local administrative, civil service, collective bargaining, and other claims. I agree not to bring any grievance arbitration lawsuit or other proceedings against releases for claims resulting anyway from the city's offering and my acceptance in the E-RIP agreement and hereby waive any right to contest those claims in any form. I understand that any action by me in violation of this promise, it result in a civil suit against me for breach of this severance agreement." Now, how am I supposed to be trusting the people serving you and me for a fee from our general fund and from Lacer's benefits and everywhere else? You know, the pigs, I know that I come from my Davis Bacon Pigs and Hogs, AKA principal and interest-giving shelter for hours of government service under MOU 35 and Hackla MOUs that are entitled to prevailing wage rate. Equation for figuring out how much money was deferred from my benefit is simple. Prevailing sum minus agreed rate paid equals some deferred from a benefit. We see here $18 is being deferred for the work and services of the plumber in the city of LA. And a little bit more for electricians and a little bit more for elevator operators. And a whole lot less for other crafts in this thing providing service for the city of LA. So, I hope you roll over the money to Lacer's like I asked you in my claim filed on October 2nd.
Thank you, sir. Donna Perman is our next speaker and then Hector Ventura will follow. Good morning.
Anyway, I hope you're feeling well, Mr. Garcetti.
I am, thank you.
Good. We don't need a 30-10 rail system. It's taking badly needed money from our MTA system. Our bus system is getting worse. We get less buses, some lines are being eliminated, our time change will hurt thousands of Angelinos. We need more local buses. The bus-only lane only on Van Nuys Boulevard will hurt businesses. If you don't have an even flow of traffic, they'll go elsewhere. And right now, our public services country are losing their rights, like the $5,000, 5,000 teachers are gonna lose their jobs. Why are those jobs important? We face another federal shutdown. Our city, county, state are working on skeleton crew, our federal too, some of it. Less people working, the service will suffer. CRA staff is probably getting stronger. Our CRA branches are growing. We are getting weaker. I'm glad to see some concessions on the DWP, but we also need to go after, they, we, city sacrificed, DWP needs to give up some of their benefits, like they already took from the other city employees. This was, but the work is really skilled in DWP, so it must be filled in by the same skilled people. Same as sanitation, something has to give. The rest of the city sacrificed, next is the CRA. We need to stop going after public employees. CRA is spending billions. Look at the CRA and see where the waste, go after waste, fraud, and abuse, not your hard-working public employees. The one that's really is giving all the problems is CRA. They're spending that $950 million. This is can't be done. It's hurting the city employees. People are going after public employees when the real person they should be going, we all should be standing up together and going after the CRA, the crickery robbery agency. There's too much fraud and abuse and I believe most of that is not needed. Go after the CRA.
Hector Ventura will be our next speaker, also in Van Nuys, then Miriam Fogler.
You're after the next one.
Is Mr. Ventura there?
Where'd he go?
Is there Mr. Ventura, Ms. Fogler? Is he around?
He left, he left.
If not, you can step forward.
Henry, I'm gonna give the number and people can look it up. You can look it up here, 29 CFR 25.2. That's what Henry's talking about. I don't know much about it, just learned a little, just a little touch here and there, but the idea is that you're taking benefits money and you're deducting it from the prevailing wage. It's all I know is that this is not very good news, finding out that you're dipping into the employees and taking money from the benefits and transferring it. I don't know why you're doing this. The balancing transfer business is going on hokey pokey here in the city. And by the way, you know, I tell you, I got a problem with Zion. He's really, he's doing a whipping job on the public here and I don't appreciate that. That's just not courteous. And I think he needs to be reprimanded either through the ethics commissioner or something here needs to be done. Rosendahl told me. So, you know, you can't, you can't, you can't do anything, you can't do, you can't do anything about it with him. He's, he's, he's a cop and he wants to run a state police here. So, this gun issue is gonna be a hot one for him because he would love to take as much as he can. And all of you like to do that because as a matter of fact, you're putting the, all the employees up at the same level as your pay. Your pay is way out of line. You make a lot more money than the managers do and that guy at the Housing Authority making $270,000 a year, that's outrageous and he gets $400,000 retirement. You're an outrage to attack people who are working, keeping the city going. How can the public vote you back in? You committed a big huts by your people, your public, voting these people back in. How dare you do such a thing?
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Our next speaker is here in council chambers, Arminak Narganian. Good morning, sir.
Respectable city council members, dear fellow Angelinos, as a liberal Democrat, I hope that elections on March 8, International Women's Day, will actually will swoop in liberal, more progressive politicians and will take out corrupt incumbents. Actually, as a liberal Democrat, you know, and a liberal journalist, I stand for social justice, for environmental protection, for, actually, for, and, for, yeah, I stand for social justice and environmental protection and actually for equal rights and racial integration. Yeah, racial integration and also, I fight against wasteful spending and, and I demand that city government reduced wasteful spending, cut down wages, and if, you know, city workers, you know, you know, find me, we win our elections, I will definitely reduce wasteful spending, cut down city executive wages 50% in order to give those raise, pay raise to city workers. I will actually, in terms of taxation, I believe that taxes should be raised. And we still, tax attorneys that came here yesterday, they actually, they actually claimed that there was, a system was broken. They refused to collect taxes, $300 million tax. We should be suspended, we should be terminated. We, employment, we should be terminated. I believe we should have more progressive tax collectors in order to collect those taxes. In terms of building new football stadium, I oppose this project because there is no live spaces in Los Angeles to build any football stadium. And high schools in Hollywood, one nice boulevard, they do have a football stadium and may well also should have been the wasteful spending unless you want to share the fate of Rod Blagojevich.
Thank you, sir. Just checking in Van Nuys, one last time, is Hector Ventura there? Or did he leave?
He left.
He left, okay, thank you. Pauline Clay is next, here in council chambers. And after that will be Sabanur Amatullah Ali Bey.
Good morning. I'm Pauline Clay of the New Africa Development and I'm here to talk about the National Football League Stadium. We have a proposal which we would like to submit to the city concerning a change of site. At the present time, it's, you want to tear down the convention center, part of the convention center. We are very much opposed to that. We are, but we are for the conventions, I mean, we are for the stadium. We would like to change, propose this change of site to across the street at the, on, across from, across the street on Figueroa. And so, because we, and we would like the help of the city in terms of helping us to pull together a proposal with the financial analysis and the land use programs that are already in place. The proposal that we have in place would eliminate the need for $350 million bond on the part of the city. And in addition, it would enhance the convention center where it right now generates from $1 billion in primary income and $2 billion in secondary income in terms of what it spreads to all the other businesses in the city. In addition, we would be able to increase the ridership on the metro rail that is now coming right through the area and we would be able to eliminate many of the environmental problems such as traffic, the noise, and the parking. So, what we are asking, if we approached Mr. Krikorian's office, but we never, but he was out of town at the time, if we could have a meeting with your office and discuss the possibility of developing this type of program so you can see what we have in mind.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments today. Sabanur Amatullah Ali Bey. Good morning.
Good morning. You say that name so very well, I appreciate that. My name is Sabanur Amatullah Ali Bey. My Christian name is Patricia Ann Card Farrell, Ephesians, Frank, A-R-R-E-L-L. I'm very proud to say that I share paternal heritage with former councilman Robert Charles Farrell, 1974 to 1991, and I live to see this day of 60 to be able to speak before you. I come to your fair city by way of Santa Rosa PD, at which time I turned myself in on a bogus probation violation warrant for LA County. So, I was transported down here from Sonoma County. I couldn't get arrested in San Francisco, Oakland, or San Leandro. I just stood up to the LA County Sheriff's Department at Linwood. I would like to make a recommendation that they win the award for the 2011 award for the most inhumane department in the world, worse than Afghanistan, worse than the Taliban, Walahi, how insidious they treat women who have mental health issues. I'm glad to refuse to walk out of the holding tank of the LA County courthouse after Judge William N. Sterling reinstated my bogus probation at 11:30 a.m. and time credit served 13 days, defendant to report in 96 hours. They only Saturday morning released me after being drug out of the courthouse and attempted to drug me into the bus, then drag me back into holding, then drug into a police car with the deputies laughing all the way. I was in waist shackles for over 16 hours and then shackles for another two after I pleaded that I cannot perform the contortionist act of bending over and splitting my cheeks so that the African-American deputy ret shit could not, could look into my vagina. PMI for this conversation, I'll be back again, but I will be in your city for three years. I'd like a little respect.
Our next item is gonna be 14 and 27 and 28 together. Our next item is gonna be 14 and 27 and 28 together. We'll take public comment on those together. Our first speaker is Wayne Spindler. He'll be followed by Donna Paramon in the Valley.
Yes, the troublesome trio of gun ordinances. The city's bankrupt. Janice Hahn's running all over the state, running for another office, not attending to her district, getting paid. She's getting paid to run for office, it's unbelievable. Paul Corretts has got a $500 dinner down in Larchmont in a couple of weeks. I mean, you know, Kevin James is running for mayor. You know, the whole city's just being destroyed. And then what do we have here? We've got guns on the minds of our beloved council. First, they want to support the right to not have ammunition-related legislation. They don't want you to carry a gun that's unloaded and unconcealed. And then they want to know if Trutanich has any problems with that. Well, Trutanich is busy because now he gets tickets from AEG to go to the free events. But the difference between him and the mayor is he actually reports it, for now. But what is this about these guns? What is it with you elected morons that you think you don't support guns? Dianne Feinstein, the most anti-gun human being on the planet, has carried a concealed weapon for years. She got a permit. Recently, there was a Sacramento law that allows anybody elected to the legislature to carry a concealed weapon. So these people can go and get permits to carry a loaded concealed weapon. If I try to go down to our moron police department, there's no way they're gonna give it to me, right? But if I go down, let's say, up north to Santa Barbara and we go play a couple of rounds of golf, I'll have my permit. So the standards deviate greatly. So the point is, is stay out of the Second Amendment and let people, no, I'm taking them together.
Donna Paramon is our next speaker. We're gonna do two minutes per speaker right now. Donna Paramon's our next speaker in Van Nuys, and then we'll go to Miriam Fogler.
Are you putting them all together or can we speak on all of them?
We're gonna take them up together. If you want to speak on all of them, you can right now.
Oh, wow. I don't have, I'm giving two minutes. I don't know if I can do it in two minutes. Anyway, 14 is very ambiguous, Ms. Garcetti and Mr. Corretts, when they can, they can decide to do worse gun control laws and implement them. If it's a total fiasco elsewhere, city council only wants a politician rich and famous, and of course criminals who don't obey laws have access to the guns. Remember, it was in Germany, they rounded up the guns and that's how that was able to happen. It can even, it can, it can happen even to the best of democracies. We will try to protect ourselves against, so foreign, yeah, there was a democracy, against foreign Islam terrorists. Our country will need us to protect them, protect the United States. Our military will be, our military won't be enough. We have, city council, can you protect me with, can you protect me? That's a laugh. It's about the city council having to first say so on our gun rights. We have a second amendment right to protect ourselves. Let's see, where am I? This won't help us at all. It will not make it safer. It will get people, we people need to practice shooting. If they can't, if they can't carry an unloaded gun, the best way to have a safer society if people carry guns know how to shoot and shoot accurately. Gun owners have to be able to handle the firearms and will do them no good. It will be a tool for the criminal element. Criminals will not obey these laws. It will only affect the law-abiding gun owners. We have to be able to have our gun rights to be able to protect ourselves against our own country, and we need to protect also for any foreign element like terrorist. But it's hard to talk on all three items with only two minutes and you get to speak as long as you want.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd will follow.
This is a violation of the Brown Act. I guess you threw that out. You make your own laws here. You're just gonna take your guns away, that's all. And I know what it is. Europe, they did the same thing in Germany. And guess what? We had liberal Jews, just like we have here in this country, Corretts and Garcetti. And I'm not a liberal Jew. And I'm gonna tell you something. You do that, they're gonna come and go after Jews. The people who have guns, who are law-abiding citizens, believe me, folks, they're gonna take down the amount of magazines, clips you can have in your guns, tell you can only have one shot like down to a muzzleloader. They're gonna tell you where you can have it, where you can be, what time you can have it, and who can have it. They're gonna control everything. And the public doesn't give a damn. And I'm gonna cuss just like Jim Madog did. Okay? Because evidently you set profanity. Okay? Are you gonna allow, you just allow vulgar. You just like filth and garbage and you just don't care about our rights here in our country. You just wanna take them away. That's what this is all about. This is not gonna curtail violence, it's gonna, it's gonna increase it. You're going to turn our crime rate around, down to up. And we got the highest incarceration and we don't even have the death penalty anymore. They want to get rid of that, folks, get rid of that. They want to give lifers for people who commit murder and rape. Okay? Not even rape, they let you, let them walk and then the guy takes off his thing and he can do whatever he wants. He can mutilate you, they can rape you, rape you, rape you. They get away with anything in the Middle East. They'll just kill us. The terrorists are coming and they just love to see us being disarmed.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After that is Suzanne Verge.
Oh, yes, I can weigh in on this one and, you know, see, the city of LA, and it's not the great city of LA anymore, the only thing great about this city is the pile of problems. Okay? And this is one of the things, the warm and fuzzy stuff that you want to get all involved in while you've got massive budget structural problems in the city. And then what your attorneys do, they run around, they look at every other city in America, go, oh, what's, what are they doing in Hollywood? Or what's, you know, what are they doing in Riverside? Or what are they doing here and there? And then you go and copy some other lame-brained thing and then you get sued and then you end up paying a bunch of settlement money and there's your general fund getting depleted again. And I've seen it 100 times, that's why I'm mad at you. When you start doing this stuff, see, here's the scenario. Paul Corretts is out in his district and maybe he ignored somebody like the dude in Arizona with Giffords, completely shut someone down. And maybe they're out to get you. And gee, you've got all these things so nobody else can have guns and gee, there might have just been someone who might have had a gun to protect you. You know, it might have been a fan of yours. And he won't be a fan anymore because you took away his guns and things that they like and need and want as part of their freedom. You know, you got, you got a massive tsunami, earthquake, nuclear thing that could happen right here on the coast. It's right here, San Onofre. All that could happen here, tonight. And that's a fact. So people need guns because this place will go crazy. This is not Japan. People are just gonna go, oh, yeah, Aragami, whatever. No, there's gonna be chaos in this city. So good luck trying to keep the criminals away because they're not gonna follow your ordinances and all your things.
Thank you. Suzanne Verge is our next speaker, and then Anne Rice-Lane. Good morning.
My name is, good morning. My name is Suzanne Verge. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles chapter of the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence. I'm here to comment on items 14, 27, and 29. I'm very concerned about the open carry movement. It seems to be expanding. They had their last meeting in the South Bay on St. Patrick's Day. We normally go out and protest, usually in front of these restaurants, to let customers know that if they go to this restaurant, they will be surrounded with about 40 people with unloaded weapons but ammunition on their hip. And so we didn't do it the last one because of the guns and the alcohol on St. Patrick's Day. The next one is in Pasadena and Holy Thursday. And to promote it, they have a wanted poster which features the Assembly Speaker, Assembly Member Portantino, and I feel it's kind of crossed the line by putting a wanted poster with an Assembly Member's picture on it. I think it just takes one unbalanced person that will jeopardize the public safety and I urge the city to do something about this open carry movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Rice-Lane is our next speaker.
Good morning and thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. My name is Anne Rice-Lane. I represent Women Against Gun Violence, a 17-year-old organization here in the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like to compliment the city council for, because for 35 years I've worked in by and for the city of Los Angeles on commissions as police and fire and several nonprofit groups. And this city council has passed some of the most progressive gun regulations of any city in the United States. It's a model for other cities and helped make California number one in laws regulating guns. And to everyone's credit, despite what you've been hearing this morning, I think you know that in 1994, when we began, there were more, well over 1,000 gun deaths in the city of Los Angeles. And last year, the number was under 300. So you must be doing something right. I also want to support the city council in supporting guns legislation at the state level, AB 144, which would allow, prohibit the open carrying of guns, excuse me, Senate Bill 124, which is a kind of cleanup bill for an ammunition ordinance that was passed last two years ago. And finally, you have already supported Mike Fier's bill, AB 86809. There are some things I would hope the city would continue to do while waiting for state legislation. And one of the things that's not been mentioned is the fact that every city around the city of Los Angeles does not have such strong gun regulations. So all of you who are participants with League of Cities or other opportunities to talk to your colleagues in other cities about passing the same kind of regulations we have here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretts, followed by Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the CLA, city attorney, and our anti-gun violence advocates for joining us today. We're all familiar with the case of the massacre in which Congresswoman Gabrielle Giffords and others, 14 to be exact, were injured and six were killed when Jared Lotner opened fire on a crowd of people and it was only apprehended when he stopped to reload his Lotner suffered mental problems and was not able to join the army because of drug use, yet he was able to get a gun. On Monday in Los Angeles, LAPD Officer Steve Jenkins was shot twice by an armed gunman who barricaded himself in his home. The shooter in this case, Sergio Salazar, was convicted in 1993 of a misdemeanor count of carrying a loaded firearm in a public place. Previously, he'd been charged with two other misdemeanors, both firearm counts. Unfortunately, both of these incidents highlight the alarming rate and the alarming fact that people with mental instability and gun-related convictions are not only able to possess guns, but are able to use them to kill innocent people. As a result of this alarming trend, the California Legislature and members of Congress have begun to introduce more legislation to prevent gun violence. Recently, as a city, we have passed resolutions in support of gun-related legislation and have begun to look at ways that we can prevent the open carry of loaded weapons, unloaded weapons in the city. The CLA will describe our recent efforts to support gun legislation to curb violence, so we won't list everything that we've been doing. Hopefully, our city attorney will discuss today what is permissible for the city to regulate, given the recent Supreme Court rulings and state exemption issues. And our anti-gun violence advocates will provide us some insight into what they think are the most important gun issues that we can work on as a city. I'd like to ask the CLA, the city attorney, and our gun advocates to join us at the table to discuss our collective efforts and to be able to explain what we may be able to do in coming days as a city. And Madam Chair, are we gonna do anything about people booing in the, Madam Chair?
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me to the individuals who are booing in the audience. I'll have to ask you to excuse yourselves if you cannot restrain from booing, or I'll ask you to depart the chamber. Excuse me, if I could get the officers in the chamber to talk to the individuals in the audience about protocol inside the chamber. Thank you. The conduct is disruptive to the meeting. Thank you. All right, to the chief legislative analyst and the staff, please go ahead.
And if I could ask a first question to the CLA, if you could provide us with a summary of what we've been supporting at the state and federal level and what the status is of some of those bills and walk us through it. And then I'll press my button again for further questions.
John Deering, Office of the CLA. I can briefly speak to legislation that the council is exploring, taking an official position, legislative position. There are two bills at the federal level and three at the state level that have either been adopted as an official position to support or are contemplated via resolution that is still before your body. The first in the federal legislation is S 436, introduced by Senator Schumer, the Fixed Gun Checks Act of 2011. This would improve state compliance with required background checks for gun purchases and withhold future federal funding for states that are found to be not in compliance with requirements to input gun transaction data into the federal database. The second federal piece is HR 308, introduced by Representative McCarthy, also known as the Large Capacity Ammunition Feeding Device Act. This would ban the possession of large-capacity ammunition feeding devices capable of holding more than 10 rounds of ammunition. On the state side, there are three bills. SB 124, introduced by Senator De Leon. This will be a ban on armor-piercing ammunition and seeking to clarify the definition of armor-piercing bullets as they currently exist now to address a recent court decision. My understanding is that Senator De Leon will be here on Friday to seek support of this. The others for the state side are AB 144, introduced by Assembly Member Portantino, which was referenced. This is also on today's council agenda. This is a ban on carrying unloaded exposed handguns in public places. And finally, AB 809, introduced by Assembly Member Fuer, which would remove the current exemption in reporting and record retention requirements for long-gun purchases. And this position to formally support was adopted by the council last Friday.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Corretts, and thank you to the advocates who have been working on this. It's been a pleasure to work with you on this, and thank you to our city attorney and CLA as well. Well, we have a force in these three, and our common sense legislation, no one needs their gun on their hip in city property, period. And what we put before was something that looked at this in city property specifically, which wanted to just make sure that you felt that that was a legally defensible way of conscribing this. You know, the state may be silent, but we're at the lowest crime rate that we've had in 50 years. It continues to drop even these tough times. And before a court case reversed it, that happened without open carry being on the books. So for those who are saying we need this in order to keep ourselves safe, the evidence of the drop in crime is despite that. Now, they might say crime would drop even further with open carry in their own logic. But let me just tell a story of what happened right on the border of Mr. Reyes's district and my own, where you had kids that were playing with a toy gun. LAPD came up to them, did not know that they were fake guns, they were out, and one of the, well, two, I think, were shot and one was, almost lost his life. When law enforcement says this is something they want in a crowded city, when you see a gun on someone's hip, you have no idea if it's loaded or not, you have no idea if it's real or not. And it's as much about if that person doesn't care about their own safety, which they should because it's extremely dangerous in a city with over 10,000 police officers in it to be wearing a gun, even though you could go into your jacket and begin to say, look, I have a-
I have a license for this." It puts you in such danger. Forget about yourself for a moment, though, if you want to do that. The people around you, in any setting, are people that you need to be responsible for too. And a police officer who is trained, when they see a weapon, to shoot, not to stop, but to kill, and to make sure that the lethal threat that is being presented to him or her is immediately stopped, that puts all of us in danger. So while we may see—and I think many of us understand—the need to enforce existing laws, which many people talk about. They look at other things we can do to conscribe, and sometimes people say the gun control laws would go too far. The idea that we need to have open carry on our streets in city-owned properties seems to just be something that would put our city employees, those who visit our properties, and our citizens at stake. So I ask for your support on that. But, City Attorney, just walk us through a little bit about why we believe that to be an area that, under the Supreme Court case, would still be legally permissible.
Assistant City Attorney Deborah Gonzalez for the Office of the City Attorney. Yes, we have looked at Councilman Garcetti's motion, and we have looked at our current ordinances, which already prohibit the possession of guns on certain city properties, but there is a bit of a gap. There is a court of appeal case—I'm sorry—a county Supreme Court case which upheld a county ordinance out of Alameda, which prohibited guns on county property, and it was upheld. So we are confident that the motion that Councilman Garcetti has presented would be feasible and defensible.
Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The view of law enforcement—and when you're trained in the police academy, as I was in 1968—you assume that any and all guns are loaded. And if someone's carrying a gun on their side, and they happen to pull that gun out, officers are trained to assume that gun is loaded. And oftentimes, a shooting takes place. And if it's an unloaded gun, it's a tragedy, not only for the individual to pull that gun, but for that officer who fired on that person, believing that weapon was loaded. And that's one of the concerns I have, is if you're carrying a weapon, law enforcement is trained that every gun is loaded. And that's the problem. Someone can say, "I'm carrying an unloaded gun." Well, you're not going to know that, and if you go to check, it might be too late when you do that check. So I totally support this. I don't have any reservation about that, and I think it's for the safety of our police officers as well as the safety of the community. It doesn't take away people's rights if they want to have a weapon in their home or their business, but it's common sense and logical. But people who want to advocate carrying a weapon on a holster, exposed, and not loaded, it makes no sense whatsoever. The other issue I have—and I've heard this before—how do we define the long gun? What is a long gun? A long barrel? What does that refer to? Because I don't know. Does it mean a shotgun? Does it mean a rifle? Does it mean a gun that's six inches? A gun that's twelve inches? A gun that's two inches? How is that defined? I hope somebody knows, because I do not know.
My understanding, at least in AB 809, which is the Fuer—
Can you speak up a little harder?
AB 809, which is introduced by Assemblymember Fuer, which was the extending the same records-retention requirements that currently exist for handguns, extending those also to include long guns. I'd have to go back and look at the actual bill to see how—
Because there's got to be a definition what a long gun is.
My understanding is it includes rifles and shotguns. I don't know how specific it gets in defining what a long gun is. I think it's more of a term used to distinguish itself from non-handguns, but I can get you that—
Well, I think we need to determine that so people understand. I interpret that as a rifle or shotgun, but you can have a six-inch revolver, you can have a semi-automatic. There's all kinds of different guns and weapons. And Mr. Smith and I and Mr. Parks are obviously familiar with it from our law enforcement experience, but I would assume that it's a rifle or a shotgun. But we need to have that definition and understand what that definition is. And I don't—I support everything. I just think we need to know what that particular aspect is. But again, I'll go back to public safety. Officers assume every single gun is loaded, and that's how they're trained. So to avoid a tragedy, I think this is a good measure to pass.
Here is a non-lawyer response. I think, Councilman Zein, that the intention is to have all gun records of any gun being purchased kept beyond the five days. So the definition of a long gun probably doesn't make any difference. It's just to add all the guns that are—
And I totally support that. And I think that any weapon that's sold should be, and if it's a transfer, that obviously has to be documented. I mean, someone needs to know. For example, the tragedy that occurred with our Metropolitan Officer, they did a search and they found out that this individual had weapons. And obviously, a police officer gets shot, and there was another exchange of gunfire. So it's important for us to know that. I mean, we don't have this black market of guns. At least, we shouldn't have the guns with the seal numbers filed off, which is another violation. But if you buy a gun, it's registered, we have the documentation.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Zein. The next speaker is Councilmember Alarcon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if I may, I don't know off the top of my head what the current definition is, but I do know, Mr. Zein, that the long-gun definition is contained in existing state law and wouldn't be impacted by this legislation. The state law differentiates between handguns, which are required to be registered, and those guns that are not. And this bill simply would include those that are currently not within the registration scheme. So it doesn't change the definition of long guns. It simply incorporates them in to make it more inclusive. On the theory that an illegal gun or an act of gun violence that needs to be traced back is just as important, whether the bullet that was fired came from a handgun or from a rifle. When there's a crime scene, and police need the tools to be able to trace that back, it doesn't really matter whether it was a handgun or a long gun. So that's, I think, the import of this legislation. I just wanted to rise in support of these efforts and to thank Mr. Coretts and Mr. Garcetti for bringing these issues forward. I actually met Mr. Coretts the first time, I think, about twenty years ago, when we were both working on these issues. And it's been a pleasure to work with Ann Rice-Lane for the last seventeen years as an advisory board member of Women Against Gun Violence. You know, every time we try to have a rational discussion about gun violence and how it impacts this community, people leap up and start screaming about their Second Amendment rights and start saying that everybody wants to take their guns away. And, you know, it's just ridiculous when you can't have even the most rudimentary, beginning, rational discussion about things that every thinking person would understand to be a common sense step without being accused of wanting to take people's guns away. We even had somebody who was speaking earlier and saying that they need their guns to protect themselves against our government. I'm sorry. I think that's an irrational and really disturbing point of view. But also disturbing are these people who are proponents of the open carry movement. Yes, there are rights that are protected under the law in the Constitution for certain types of gun possession. But with those rights comes a great deal of responsibility, too. And the carrying of weapons on one's belt wantonly in public places with children present, even places where people are drinking, is the most irresponsible sort of thing that affects our entire community. Whether that weapon is ever drawn or not, it impacts our community in a negative way. It makes those places less accessible to families. We had a long discussion yesterday about the incident that happened in Dodger Stadium and how unsettling that was to everyone, because now those of us who want to take our families to Dodger Stadium, you know, need to be fearful. Well, doesn't that apply equally to every public place where a family wants to go, and then they're confronted with people who they don't know? And they don't know whether they're law-abiding, they don't know whether they're rational, they don't know whether they're even mentally stable, carrying a gun on their belt? I mean, to me, that deprives all of us of our own rights to enjoy our city and our state in the way that we should be able to do. So I think having these sort—And then, Mr. Zein raised the very important point, the public safety element of this. Our law enforcement officers are asked to do so much with not sufficient resources. They're supposed to be out there protecting us. They're in fear of danger that they must face every single moment, because they are in danger. And then we're going to add to the difficulty of that job by allowing people to carry guns out on the street, which that officer won't ever know if it's loaded or not until they inspect the gun after a tragic shooting occurs. Now, that is just, to me, as irresponsible as an act can be, and it endangers the lives of our law enforcement officials, it endangers the lives of law-abiding citizens who just want to go to Starbucks and have a cup of coffee, and then they're confronted with this situation. So I stand strongly in support of Mr. Coretts and Mr. Garcetti, and in our state legislation to ban this open carry movement altogether.
Thank you, Councilman Kocorian. I just want to let colleagues know that we do have police department personnel here. Should you have a question of them, they are in the audience. Our next speaker is Councilman Alarcon.
Actually, I was wondering where this discussion was going to go in terms of substance. The motion actually just says to bring advice. And, you know, it's almost as if every year, somebody steps forward with an incremental piece of legislation or political action to target a particular problem related to guns. And it is a dynamic reality out there with regards to what the current problems are with guns. And so I was wondering if we couldn't—were we going to produce a report to give us an update as a way that we could see what other jurisdictions across the nation are doing and sort of get an idea of—if we could move in one fell swoop to tackle a whole bunch of items as opposed to doing it one per year, it seems? It sort of gives the sense that people are showboating when they introduce, you know, a particular—you know, red bullets. This year, we're going to go after red bullets or something. So I was just wondering if there was a way we could generate from this action, and I would move—if we haven't taken that step—I would move that we prepare such a report. And I would only ask for guidance as to who would be involved in the preparation of that report, to do sort of an analysis of where we are in the state of protection against illegal gun use and what might—what other measures we might take holistically as opposed to incrementally. Would—I don't know whether—Mr. Garcetti, maybe you can give me some guidance. Would this group be the group that we would go to, or is there—would we ask that, of course, LAPD should be involved and—yeah, but are we going to generate a report? Maybe we could ask the CLA to put together a report?
Councilmember—
Pardon me? It's in the motion?
It's in the report. The report from committee.
The report—oh, the report from committee. Okay, okay. That's the report? Please do, please do. Anyway, you know, I've—having served on the city council and in other positions for about eighteen years now, and five years before that for Mayor Bradley, I've seen many different ramifications of the gun issues. I want to thank the Brady Campaign for their leadership. I was one of the first responders at the—maybe the second bachelor responders at the childcare center shooting where my daughter's teacher's daughter was shot and worked with the kids. And emerging out of that, there was tremendous activity that I think was beneficial, national —on a national scale. And the bank robbery, which was in my district, you know, and so many different iterations. Yesterday, a hostage situation—or two days ago, excuse me—that, you know, we still have issues with gun violence. So I just want to applaud all the work that you do, and I hope that we can, as I said, do things more holistically as opposed to one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kocorian. Our next speaker is Councilman Coretts.
Having been involved in this issue for almost forty years, I have to point out that because there's so much opposition from so many fronts, and there's so many constitutional issues and so many preemption issues, you really have to do these issues one at a time and really work them through. If you tried holistically to solve all the problems, you'd wind up with a massive group of issues all before every court you can imagine with all kinds of lawsuits. And it's been—it's been very difficult just to get a little step at a time, but the results are dramatic, and they save lives, and they're worth it. That's really been the only way that one can do this. And that's part of what we're trying to do here today, is ask the questions that will help us identify what perhaps our next steps are. And my next question would be for the city attorney's office. Is there pending legislation that involves some of the ordinances that we've passed in the past? And if so, can you give us an update on them?
I'm sorry, you mean—is there pending—
I meant litigation, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, we are not aware of any of our ordinances that have been certainly passed within the last several years that have been challenged or that are currently being challenged.
Has the city joined as amicus on any current legislation that other cities or the state have pending in court?
Current litigation?
Yes.
We do not have—we are not presently amicus on any current litigation, not to our knowledge.
Should we be—are there other cases that we should be supportive of, like the Safe Storage case or others?
Typically, what happens is when a city or a county is sued because of their ordinance, they will reach out either to the League of California Cities, or they will reach out to the larger cities like Los Angeles. And we have many times received those requests. We will certainly bring those to the council. We are not in receipt of any at this moment.
And can you tell us about the challenge to the Safe Storage law that has been passed in other cities and where that stands?
I am not aware of that at all. I have not—I was not asked to research that. I can certainly look into it and get back to either your office or to the council on that. I have not given communication with those attorneys.
That would be appreciated, because there may be an angle for a possible ordinance ourselves. I know some that were probably overly broad, like the one in Washington, D.C., was struck down for more obvious legal reasons, but we could look at the one done elsewhere, I believe, in San Francisco and perhaps elsewhere, and see if there's something we could do that might be even more likely to pass legal muster. And also, for the gun violence advocates, what are your highest legislative priorities this year, and where are they? At the state level, federal level, both? Can you walk us through those?
I can only speak for—
Councilman Coretts, you're a little over your time. You want to push your button again so we can get their answer?
Well, hopefully, they can answer a question without me having to speak.
Can we conclude with this?
Okay. Women Against Gun Violence is supporting, along with the Brady Campaign and statewide organizations, the open carry law that Assemblymember Portantino is carrying, AB 144. We are in support of Mike Fiers' bill for exemption of long guns. We are pretty much in sync with the city of Los Angeles and the agenda that we've been working on with both Councilmember Coretts and Councilman Garcetti. Personally, I like the idea of cities passing bills that are also being considered in Sacramento, because I think it just builds a groundswell of support and helps the legislature then take an action when they know that there are communities across the state of California working on such things as open carry bills. So I think that's a really good strategy and one that's been used by the city for many, many years. There's another issue—excuse me—locally that hasn't been raised today about sending letters to gun buyers, advising them that if they are purchasing a gun—not in this language—but if they are purchasing a gun for another person, that if the gun is used in a crime, they will be the prime suspect. And this is a really big effort to do away with straw buyers. And it's been—this program was created— And it's been, this program was created in the city of Los Angeles by the city attorney's office and tested in a number of divisions of the police department, but not across the city. And we hope that the city will now make this a project that will cover all the gun stores in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Councilman Laban.
Years ago, people could carry sheath knives on their hip. And I was working for John Farrow, and I brought it up to John. And this ed, when the 4th District went through the set apart between Olympic and Melrose to downtown. Now, we went to try to get state legislation because what would happen, you had a sheath knife, and if you bumped into somebody, you could aggravate a serious situation. It took us two years going through the police commission, through the state legislature, because I believe Modock County, and you, State Representative, where has the most sheep up there? The sheep herders, you know, when they go to lunch, they keep their thing there. What I'm asking the city officials to look and research that, to see how you could apply that ban to this county. And I'm sure someone in the state legislature would pick that up because it was a ban. Because what we felt is, Mr. Farrow, a former police commissioner for many years before he was to the council in 1966, because when you have it, when you have it on you, you have a tendency to use it. And the seriousest thing's about a firearm is that those who protected service don't know it's fake or real. It scares me to see all the toy guns that are out, even though they have an orange cap on the top. But if I could ask the CLA to research that, and it was about 27 or 30 years ago that this was orchestrated, that gave the county the ability, because some other counties have some other thoughts. And maybe in Mount Shasta or Shasta County, I shouldn't say that, there's other thoughts. But in this county, I think we could try this. Does that make sense to you, Mr. CLA?
We can look into that and to address some of the other concerns.
And try to mirror it, you know, because it's just, it's just, it's just a knife. Now, not everybody was going to pull that knife out, but somebody may, because there was a lot of stabbings. There was a lot of stabbings. It was a big sheath knife. Used to walk down Hollywood Boulevard, used to walk down Alvarado, all these streets. So that, took that off there, so it decreased the opportunity. The same would be true if you stripped someone from the ability in this county of 11 million people. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I want to report back on that, Mr. CLA.
And just to address some of the other concerns or the suggestions that were made, our office tracks all state and federal bills. So the ones that I described earlier, the ones that resolutions have only been introduced in support of and are at the final stages of exploring whether or not to take an official legislative position. What we can do is get a list of all of the pending state and federal bills related to gun legislation and provide that to you all for...
Yeah, the research, you have research. And if you can't do it, Abak can, because he's also very good at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Laban. Our next speaker is Councilman Garcetti.
Just to be brief, thank you. And I think you made my point, Mr. Carruthers, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Alarcon. I think incremental becomes holistic over time. And actually, the city has done some good holistic work by looking at each of these and taking them each one at a time. And the three things before us are, the first one, to look at that holistic thing, get that report back, and to look at what the legal analysis is and the state of gun law in the, at the federal and state levels right now. Secondly, it's to support AB-144, which is the unloaded exposed handgun, which would ban unloaded exposed handguns in California. And then the third is looking at what we can do to expand what we have as abandoned city buildings to all of our city properties as well. So it's, it's simple, straightforward stuff. One other thing, though, while we're looking at legal understanding concerning our federal, state, and local parameters on this, one of the things that's been very effective that we haven't been able to do in the last few years, but that I've asked that we move forward with too, is the new gun purchase letters, which the city attorney's office has done to pass. And that is a resource question, so we'll bring this up during budget time. But basically, this is something to help cut down straw purchases. And it would be a letter, as soon as you get something saying, if you pass a gun on to somebody, that not only is that illegal, you'll be prosecuted and it's a felony. And the past when we had that, we saw straw purchases decline in the city. And I'd love to get that back. It's a very small price to pay for making sure, because a lot of people say, well, these guns just get in the hands of criminals anyway. Great, well, let's deal with that problem. And this is a way of doing that. So where are we with that and what sort of resources will we need to be able to move that forward?
Yes, I believe that item is in public safety, and there was a report that was given, I believe, in November of last year. There was the issue of resources and cost. And I believe the CAO's office was asked to report back with regard to that to Public Safety Committee. The other thing is, I've been informed by a colleague in our office that the Attorney General's office is looking at taking that program statewide, which would be fantastic.
And I've discussed that with our new Attorney General, and so we want to work very closely with her on that as well. And if there could be state funds that help us, perfect, you know. Not, there's a lot of state funds for much of anything right now. But I'll talk with Mr. Parks, because this is certainly a priority for me and I think in our budget, considering how few dollars it is, it doesn't take a lot of dollars in our city budget, it's well worth it if it can keep a gun out of a criminal's hand who otherwise couldn't buy a gun. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Our next speaker, Councilman Demazin.
Thank you. I'd just like to have the representational San Luis Police Department, the uniformed personnel who face the situation. I see we have lieutenant, we have a captain, we have a sergeant, or is it a D3? Okay, it used to be a policeman in. These are street officers that, if I'd just hear their comments on this particular, if you can please come forward.
It's in the code.
Since these folks are representatives of the LAPD, who are obviously familiar with the hazards on the streets of Los Angeles, and I see by the hash marks, they have some years of service. So if we can just hear from the official view, from the captain, lieutenant, and then the detective. Captain?
Yes, good morning, city council members. My name is Captain Wiga Romero. I'm the Assistant Commander Officer of Gang and Narcotics Division. And here I have Lieutenant Natalie Cortez, who's the officer in charge of the gun unit at Gang and Narcotics Division. And to my left is Detective Rick Tompkins, who's in charge of the gun unit at Gang and Narcotics Division. And in discussions with the Chief Police, Charlie Back, you know, he's supportive of legislation, particularly state legislation, that will safeguard the community and specifically with respect to public safety in terms of keeping guns off the street. There is, in fact, a legal definition to long guns, to answer the question of Councilman Azin. And we can speak to that if you like at this point with Detective Tompkins.
Detective Tompkins, LAPD. The handgun will be any barrel with a barrel length of less than 16, and a rifle or shotgun will have a barrel length of over 16. And that usually has something to do with it being fired from the shoulder also. There are exceptions to it. You have pistol grip shotguns that have the barrel length of 18 or over. If it's below that, they'll be considered a short barrel, and that's a violation of 12020.
So this will cover everything?
Yes.
And then the other question I have is in, your years of experience, 100 years of experience, whatever you folks have, a lot of years on those hash marks, how often do officers come in contact with an individual with a gun that's not loaded versus the gun loaded?
It's rare.
It's rare that it's unloaded?
Yes.
But it's, hi. But it doesn't change the fact of how we approach that individual, as you indicated earlier.
Well, that's what I want to get to.
Yeah, and it is alarming, as you said, because we were trained to treat guns as always loaded. And so there's no way of knowing, so it doesn't, it heightens us. We get that call with a man or a woman with a gun, and it does concern us, and we do approach it tactically, as you indicated, with our training and the academy.
Identify yourself for the record. Identify yourself for the record.
I'm Lieutenant Natalie Cortez.
Thank you.
And if an individual is carrying a weapon that's not concealed, you encounter them on some type of a call, possible suspect of robbery suspect, burglary suspect, car theft, whatever the case may be, and you approach that individual who has this weapon in a holster that's exposed, that's unloaded, and they then pull that weapon out, what happens?
Well, there's a couple of issues here. One is, obviously, we don't know by any means at that particular point that the gun is unloaded. Just like you indicated, Councilman, we treat weapons as if they're always loaded. That's a very, very important tactical key piece of training that we do. And obviously, at that point, when we identify a person as a result of radar call or a consensual encounter or a contact in the field, that we're going to treat that individual as someone who is armed and dangerous at that particular point, and we're going to employ the appropriate tactics in order to deal with that person and to, what we can to neutralize that person's activity.
Councilman Azin, your one minute over.
In common language, if they pull that gun out, it's likely that they're going to be shot.
If they pull the gun out, then we're looking at a life and death situation, a very possible use of deadly force, depending on circumstances, however, that is very likely the case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Azin. Our next speaker is Councilman Carruthers.
Just a couple more questions to our law enforcement folks. What do you do if you find someone in a Starbucks, for instance, since there's been an open carry movement and folks are actually intentionally going into places like Starbucks with a gun in the right circumstance? What do you do if you run into someone in that circumstance?
Well, you know, once again, our primary concern is the safety of the officers who respond and also the safety of the community. There are times when we are made aware through intelligence that that is actually going to be the case, that we're going to have an open carry situation with a group of people, and we deploy specific tactics to deal with that. But our primary concern is always the safety of the police officer and the safety of the community.
And one last question for the Brady Campaign. Are there other gun-related issues that we should be looking at, that we're not looking at, taking action on currently? Are there things we could be doing?
Not anything specific at this point. Nothing, I, there's quite a few bills that we're following in the state legislature, but nothing that I, that we're going to be really out in front about.
So strategically, at the moment, you think most of the activity is at the state level and not at the local level?
And I think you've covered, based on the CLA's report, I think you guys are right there with us on most of these bills, so good.
Well, I thank you all for participating, and we'll continue moving forward in this arena. The city of L.A. has been a leader on this issue for many, many years, back when we passed early legislation banning assault weapons, which helped lead to state and federal legislation, undoubtedly has saved many lives. The city of L.A. has done Saturday night special legislation that led to state legislation. And I hope we'll continue to provide leadership to pass appropriate, common sense gun violence legislation.
Thank you, Councilman Carruthers. Seeing no one else on the speaker key, we do have a few cards for public comments. We'll be giving one minute for each speaker. Donald Perman, I believe, submitted cards for 27 and 28, and that's for one minute, and that's over in bad eyes. Is Ms. Perman there? Seeing no one there, I will move to Marion Fogler. Is Marion Fogler present? Five is 27, 28, for one minute. I assume they're both gone? Okay, they're not there. Speakers here in City Hall, we have with us Arnold Sachs for one minute on item 28. Come on up, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you. Here's a real problem, because all three items were considered, they were given two minutes. I'd just like to know when this ordinance is enacted, and this is according to an article from one of the councilwomen regarding the marijuana tax, that we're spending an awful lot of time, we spend building and safety time, city attorney time, city clerk time, we're going to spend code enforcement time. Will all these costs be covered by this ordinance that you are considering enacting or backing? And then finally, I'd also like to note that it's politically correct. I do remember when you had the boycott hearings here in council chambers for Arizona. And then again, I'll point out also that 11/23, National Congress of Cities Conference and Exposition is taking place in Phoenix, Arizona.
Thank you very much. Your one minute is up. Thank you, sir. Charles Gunn?
That's Wayne Spender. You can say Wayne Spender.
Wayne Spender?
Yeah, it's all right. So we got, so the NRA has clearly come out against the disallowing of having a non-concealed unloaded firearm. Because it's been challenged before in court, and cities shouldn't be getting involved in this. Now, look at the time we spent. Look at the budget that this city has to deal with come July 1st. What's more important? Tampering with something that the lunatics in Sacramento are dealing with, because this is duplicitous, or dealing with the layoffs of city workers that you're going to be facing, which is more important? It's obvious. The local body here needs to deal with balancing the budget because that's public safety. If you don't deal with that, there's not going to be any cops to worry about whether anybody's violating any gun rights. So deal with that first, do your job, and then maybe in overtime, you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the speaker. Mr. Clerk, what's in front of us?
Mr. President, we have three items. Item 14, council should note and file the staff report. We have item 27, which is a resolution for adoption, and we have item 28, which has a substitute motion, Garcetti-Carruthers, that has been circulated.
So we'll be taking all these items together? We can open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Yes, sir. 27, go fourth with, fourth with on 27. That's noted. Now we'll move on items 13, 24, and 25. So 24 and 25.
13, 24, and 25.
Twenty-two speakers?
Yeah, just to take those, no, so let's vote on these two together.
So let's vote on 13, 24, and 25 together. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. So the following card for item one, Wayne Spender.
Got to get up again, yes. Yes, we got to deal with everything in reverse order. Here we go, we got hearing appeals against confirmation of assessment for improvement of La Mesa Street sewer improvement. Sounds good, improvement. Then we have the word assessment. Assessment means property owner pays. Why, on a sewer improvement, do these properties get a DWP bill? Yes, they do. And when you, when you use water in the DWP, they collect a fee called the Sewer Service Charge, SSC. It's in the hundreds of millions of dollars. That goes, not to DWP, it goes to the city, Public Works, to maintain the sewer system in the city of Los Angeles. Why are you doing these special assessment districts? Because what happens is, you mail a post, a set of postcards out to these people, they get it in the mail, it looks like junk mail, they throw it away. Then they have an election. This is an actual election. The city clerk has to actually receive the postcard back, filled out, signed, and attested. If a majority of the people in the assessment district, which is weighed by the value of the square footage of their properties, do not vote against it, it passes. So in a situation where nobody votes, a 50-50 tie of zero still passes it. And I think what's happening with all of this, and there were other agenda items dealing with this subject, they're, they're trying to balance part of the budget in these assessment districts when these city services should be handling this kind of thing. So sewer improvements, covered by your DWP bills, money given from the DWP to the city, these repairs and these improvement districts are already handled. This is... This is a duplicitous tax, unlike the lighting districts, where if you put up new streetlights at the request of the property owners in like an alley that doesn't have it, that's different. But this is a necessary function of the city. It should not be under the burden of property owners directly. I urge you to vote no on these assessment districts. Use the money that's already been collected by the city for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No more speakers on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tablet the vote.
10 eyes.
Thank you. Our next item is item 15. We do have one speaker on that, and that is Arnold Sachs on item 15.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. An innocuous little item on your agenda, but what caught my eye is that this was considered by the Board of Harbor Commissioners on June 17, 2010, and the city council on July 27, 2010. And here you are, April 6, considering it again. For what reason? Why would almost, what, 10 months, eight months, nine months pass between when this was proposed and heard at the Board of Harbor Commissioners on June 17, 2010, and approved by the city council last year again, on July 27, 2010? Wouldn't the sequel requirements have been considered before the commissioner and the council would have considered the item on the agenda? It seems you're moving us backwards. How many times do simple things like this happen in the course of the city council doing a government plan? Look what's happening with the football stadium. How quickly that's moving down a highway. This is 10 months later, eight, nine months later, and finally, some action being taken. I think I said it before, you're leading from behind. Keep waving that flag.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Seeing other speakers, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tablet the vote.
10 eyes.
Thank you. And our last item is item number 19. We do have Arnold Sachs on this one as well.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. I really held, I held this item for the land dedication fee. Do you realize that the land dedication fee here for this strip of land is going to amount to $2,695, with a 7% surcharge in the amount of $188.65? I think we have a way to solve part of the budget problem for the city of LA. Instead of letting AEG lease property for the stadium, have them do a land surcharge. At least you'll get, what, $2,694 more dollars for the property than the $1 they want to get to lease that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Let's open the roll on this item. Let's close the roll. Tablet the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, that takes cover the agenda. Next, our business, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, so we have, members, any announcements? Seeing none, okay. Adjourned motions, announcement? Yes. Councilor Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to advise the public and also my colleagues that at the request of Congresswoman Maxine Waters, it's going to be a community meeting at Jesse Owens Park Saturday, April 9, 11:30 a.m. In Jesse Owens Park is 9651 South Western Avenue, and it deals with the impact of the federal budget cuts, particularly HR1. And so we invite the public to be there, to hear this information. And those that are not familiar, as HR1 is talking about removing funding from the health care, the federal health care bill, in addition to cutting such things as Head Start, housing for the elderly, job training, and a variety of social programs that are funded by the federal government.
Thank you, Councilor Parks. Any other announcements? Seeing none. Members, any adjourned motions? No adjourned motions? Yes. Councilor Parks. Please stand up for adjourned motions.
I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of former board of directors of the YMCA, George Binter Jr., passed away on Sunday, April 3. He served on the YMCA board from 1991 to 2009. He was involved as a chair of the Insurance and Risk Management Committee, the Executive Committee, the Finance and Risk Management Committee, the Golf Classic Planning. A memorial service will be planned at 11 a.m. Friday, April 8, at All Saints Church at 132 North Euclid in Pasadena. And the family is asked that in lieu of flowers, that there be contributions to the George Binter Lung Cancer Research Fund at the USC Norris Cancer Center, or the Huntington Library Arts Collection in his memory. There will be a repass immediately after the service at the Valley Hunt Club at 520 South Orange Grove, Pasadena. He survived by a host of family members.
Thank you, Councilor Parks. No other adjourned motions? Seeing none. This concludes the meeting. City Clerk, please take the roll. Thank you, we are adjourned.